I'd like to call to order the work session of the City Council of City of Maplewood for Wednesday, May 7th. And can we have a roll call, please?
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Okay, we'll give you a second there. Turn off my phone. Tonight, we're going to be reviewing the budget for the Public Works operations and capital improvement, Prop S, bond fund, parks operations and capital improvement, sewer lateral and solid waste. Would you like to introduce the?
Yes, we will go ahead and start. We'll talk about Public Works operations first, and then we'll move to capital. So when we discuss the capital, we'll look at the revenue. So if you go into operational budgeting in fiscal year 2526 in our worksheet, and you want to filter by account ID 110600. A couple of items to highlight before we get into any questions that you all have. As with the other departments, we adjusted that category guidance regarding community events, public relations, and employee events, and also made related adjustments to care and sustenance to make that line a little bit more purposeful and in line with how we're approaching that in other departments, which is those expenses cover emergency services such as accommodation for employees during snowstorms and meals that we provide to employees during snowstorms. We are looking at rolling over some of the appropriation from this year for the comprehensive plan. We had originally budgeted $155,000, so you'll see the remainder of that project in next year's budget. We have decreased some of the vehicle repair costs to reflect our continued fleet modernization. We've increased the training budget for Street Department employees. We've also increased allocations for small tools and equipment related to safety enhancements for the Street Department. So those are just some of the more notable adjustments that have been made. But I'll go ahead and let you all jump in with questions you have in terms of any differences that you have questions about between what's projected for this fiscal year and what is budgeted for next fiscal year.
Okay, starting from the top with regard to salaries. Are we going to be replacing our housing inspector? Okay. Is there a possibility of I remember there was talk of reducing the frequency of housing inspections?
We talked about that during COVID, and at the time, the council wanted to keep them annual. Because at the time, we were having a retirement coming, and so I'd asked the council if they wanted to do every other year. At the time, the council said they wanted to keep it annual, so I haven't heard anything since. I'm assuming that's what the council still wants, and that's why we were planning on advertising here in the next week or so.
The question is, if we were able to, if we did implement every other year, would we be able to reduce the would we be able to eliminate that or not fill that position?
That would be, that's accurate. If we did not, if we did them every other year, we would only need one housing inspector.
And there were other responsibilities of that position besides housing inspection?
With one of our inspectors, and if we're doing future hires, we always try to get hybrid. So for example, one of our housing inspectors also helps with snow removal. They also help at the garage. That's kind of been a tradition in the past. We've just pulled inspectors from the Public Works Department, just kind of worked that way. They've applied, they've gone through the training, and so it's nice to have that there as a backup. Our current housing inspector, who is leaving, the sole duties were just housing inspections. But we've always had, particularly in the last maybe 20 years, we've always had one of our two housing inspectors have always done, served as backup for the Public Works Department, and that's just because we're such a thin staff. We want to make sure we can handle snow removal if need be.
Are we able to keep up with commercial and residential building plan reviews?
We are.
Okay, so we wouldn't need another person to assist with that?
No, that's done by the building official, all commercial, and all plan reviews is done by our building official, Brian Herr. The housing inspection certifications are nowhere near as robust. Neither is the type of work that's done. It's primarily property maintenance and health safety for the housing inspector. The inspections are a little more, a little easier.
So I guess if there's any interest in the council of changing the schedule for the housing inspections, I think we need to discuss that right away, because my guess is that you guys are going to be soliciting candidates for that position.
Was planning on handing the updated job description to the city manager tomorrow or Friday. About our staffing situation? Oh, yeah, I apologize. One of our housing inspectors has just resigned probably about a week, week and a half ago. He's taken a position with another city. And so we have a building official who handles all of our fire inspections, does all of our, basically our building and our plan review. He's actually certified to do commercial, industrial, and housing. And so those, the more difficult, more challenging inspections that require various certifications are done by our building official. The housing inspections do the rental properties. All of our rental properties get inspected annually, and those are done by two inspectors. Our building official could back up the housing inspector if need be.
I don't like the idea of switching to every other year for the housing inspection just because of how much that reinforces our tenant bill of rights and our dedication to our renters.
We've discussed this at length before, and, you know, there's a lot of turnaround already as it is. And, you know, usually, we've already discussed how they can move somebody else in there if it's only been eight months, and then four months later, they'll have to have another inspection. I mean, unfortunately, you know, Anthony has already stated, a very thin staff, and this person does help out in other areas that the city needs as Anthony or staff sees fit. So I think that's not a good idea to not replace.
There's no question it would impact the rental.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah.
And we, one thing that's interesting about that, and we talked about it, is we, a lot of our annual inspections lead to follow-up calls. The tenants are much more likely to contact a city inspector if they're having a problem with the landlord. We get a lot of those, probably, if I had to guess, three or four, nearly one a day from somebody that calls that's having a problem with their property. And so that, the inspectors are not necessarily just doing annuals, they're also doing complaint basis as well.
Yeah, when we do the surveys about city services and we get these excellent marks, I think having two inspectors is the kind of reason why.
The time I brought it up as a possibility is when we were, it was during COVID, and we were not aware that we were going to have federal funds at the time. So it was, I was concerned, we may have to lay off several employees, and if you have someone that was retiring, it was a stopgap possibility.
I mean, with as many as.
Nick?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think moving away from annual inspections, we don't want to undercut anything that we've passed previously with the tenant bill of rights, but I do think it's worth further discussion around other options that might create additional resourcing for the staff. So going to like some sort of incentivized structure where you're spending less time on sun in phase one and two, which probably don't have a lot of issues, and if you are up to speed in passing inspections there, maybe you get inspections less frequently. And then some of the other properties that may need more focus, the staff would have time to do inspections on those and follow up to make sure issues are resolved. I think it'd be worth discussing something like that to see if it makes sense. Still keeps us where we need to be with our tenant bill of rights, but also could create some additional bandwidth for the inspectors.
And Sean, you're in concurrence with two inspectors?
Yeah, yeah, we've talked about this in length, and I do like the, what Nick was saying, you know, if you have buildings that have just gotten built, you know, first 10 years, maybe every other year, and they can focus their energy in some of these older buildings that we have here for rentals.
Challenges, especially if they have our change of occupancy, because there's some, in some cases, we may not have been in a property, it can be decades in some cases, and those ones are the ones that usually take significant amounts of time. Even our, even some of our older units, because we are in there every year, they're generally in better shape.
Just to clarify, when it comes to annual inspections for rental units, is it is a responsibility of the property owner to schedule those inspections?
That's correct.
So does that fluctuate at all from year to year? Does that impact how many inspections occur?
No, because we keep track of that and we send that out. Sometimes we will pick up, because it may be, we may not even know that, and some people don't realize that it's, even though we advertise and discuss this, sometimes there's people that will just move into town, and they'll end up renting something out without knowledge that they're supposed to do this. But we keep a pretty good track of what properties are rental, what properties our owner occupied, and then we send notices at the beginning of each month, and they have a month to schedule it for the following month. So we actually provide the reminders to the property owners, and then we also alert tenants to that as well. Somebody needs to be present for each one of our inspections, and it's usually either a property owner or in some cases, a property manager. We do not want inspectors going into residences without somebody else being present.
Right.
Well, that gives you confirmation, then, that you should move forward with the request for that position. And then part-time salaries, how many, how many people do we have year-round, and how many people do we have in the summer?
We have, we have two employees that open and close bathrooms. And then in the summer, we've had a former employee that was going to school, that started as a summer helper many, many years ago, worked for the city for several years, decided to go back to college. That individual was coming back every summer for the past three. This is, we've been informed he's not coming back. The good news is he's graduated, he's looking for another job. I think Sean knows who I'm talking about. And so we're discussing whether or not we're going to go out and try to get summer hires. It's going to be up to the city manager, but in the past, we would usually advertise and try to, try to get summer help, want them to be at least 18 years of age if possible.
I remember discussions with regards to electrifying the lock system so that we wouldn't have to. Has that been done or is it under consideration?
You want to discuss that?
Yep. Years ago, we started, we hired part-time staff to go and lock the bathrooms in the evening. Their duties go beyond just locking the bathrooms, they're also going in, they're clearing the bathrooms if anybody in there, checking, making sure there's no water breaks, toilets flushed and all that. They lock, we have four different parks, they make their rounds, probably takes them about an hour a night. The electronic locks aren't favorable because they're not, if they're in there, they're not going to, you know, some people will stay in there probably all night. One of our part-time employees did find somebody that was OD'd, luckily survived. He called 911, got him down there, got help. So it's a concern to trust the automatic locks. They can also prop them open. They won't lock if they're propped open. Some of our park tenants will know that, and they'll know the routine, so.
I didn't necessarily think that that was the solution, but it was being discussed, and I didn't, you know, with resolutions.
It's definitely cost-saving measure, but it does, it is, there is a nice service having someone outside, someone in the park, someone, someone present onsite to double-check everything. It just helps us make sure our comfort stations or bathroom facilities are still in good order. Sometimes you get vandalism, or just, like I said, there could be overflowing toilets or potentially a mess that needs to be cleaned up before someone has to walk in there.
Do we provide that employee with Narcan?
No, we do not.
You know.
We do not.
It's free from St. Louis County, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea if it actually saved a life. Those are all the questions I had with regards to personnel. The, our salt situation, I assume we still have a stockpile up in North County?
A hundred tons, yes. And we get that salt for newer council members. We get, it's a co-op, it's 26 cities. We work together to get a barge that comes up the Mississippi River, saves us a tremendous amount of money on bulk salt. We also had an agreement from many years ago where we store extra salt at, as part of our bandwagon, we store extra salt in St. Charles. They have a massive former MoDOT, pardon me, thank you, Sanian.
Sanian, yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
If you could see it off 270, we have several hundred tons there as well. For rainy day funds, whenever we get a really bad winter, we've used it three times probably in the last 12 years, which saved us the ability of having to buy our own salt dome, which they're not cheap. Right now, Jason's working on updating the roof structures on our, on our storage bins right now, but we've got enough, and we believe we're good for next year.
And our nuisance abatement, 60361, my understanding.
The house, the amount we put in there is what we assume could be a potential demolition for a house. We're budgeting, we never know. We did not have a house this year. We did have, what was it, tree, 8, 8,500 that we had to just take down on, we just had to take a tree down for, it was $8,500. So you never know what you're going to have the following year, but we always put, we assume a potential demolition maybe. That's what that, 18 did we put in there? Sorry.
As an extension of our conversation last night, where we identified opportunities to continue to make cuts where we don't have an absolute need, this would be an area where we may decide we're going to zero this out, and if we have a need, we're going to take that out of fund balance. This would be an instance where, unless we know we're going to spend that money, because we're looking for these areas for about a half million dollars' worth of cuts, that this would be potentially an area that we would examine for reduction.
If we have a house demolition and use it for the fire department as an exercise, obviously, we still have cleanup, but, you know, I see that as an opportunity.
Anytime we've had, we've always, they always jump at the chance, anytime they can cut through and smash some stuff, and it does work well for the training. But there are many, to expand on what Amber just mentioned, there have been several, many years where we haven't had to utilize those funds, so something does need to be cut if we need to take a fund balance later, it's not a bad idea.
On the nuisance abatement, when we have to cut people's lawns because they haven't done that, is, does that have a line item?
No, that just comes out of, out of our personnel costs, and then we place a lien on the property through St. Louis County that goes on individuals' property tax bills, and then we get reimbursed for that later, and it goes back into that account.
Okay.
This is just more for, like I said, a large tree or a structure.
Okay, that covers most of the questions I have. What other questions do we have from council on the operations and capital improvement?
We got two quick ones. The cleaning supplies is up. Are we just putting all the cleaning supplies for the entire city into that? Okay. Also, two small tools, minor equipment. You've got 10 grand in there, it used to be about 500 bucks. Just a lot more small tools, you've got to replace stuff.
We moved, we moved, we were buying more out of capital, and we're moving them into
It was a change, okay.
1106 here.
And traveling conference, we got to make Jason smarter.
I don't know if that's possible. We can put a million dollars in there, potentially it might work. I don't know if Lexi's going to like that idea, though, or Amber, but we'll try.
To make me smarter? Oh.
The trash, lawn waste tags, that's just a pass-through?
It is.
There's no forever tags left?
For the concrete materials, when we use up Prop S funds, will that go up again since we're, do you expect any increase there?
Most likely not. It just kind of depends on what kind of small projects we have. We still, we still, even with Prop S funds, will do a lot of this work, because it's still a lot cheaper for us to do the work versus having a contractor do it.
The railroad crossing at Sutton, money was allocated previously for that work. I didn't notice.
What's ironic is we're on, it'll be in, it'll be in the 2,400 account, that'd be in our capital development account, that'll, that's been about five years we've been waiting on that. We turned our 100% complete plans in June of 2024. We didn't hear back, and we followed up multiple times in between that until December. And basically, now it's gone on to the Federal Rail Association, FRA, and they're reviewing these, they're putting the final touches. If I had to guess, I would hope it would be this summer we would find out, and we could try to coordinate the Greenwood reconstruction with the crossing to minimize the pain for the, you know, the traveling public. But, you know, we have to have those federal funds obligated by October 1st or September 30th this year, so it may or may not work. It's possible we have to put a wedge in there, because we're going to raise, we're going to elevate the intersection at Greenwood probably about nine inches, which is going to help visibility if you're heading southbound on Sutton, because the track does kind of dip down. But both those projects are taking the right of way for the Greenwood project, was a little problematic with a few parcels, but we're moving on that as well.
Thank you. What other questions do we have? And with regards to solid waste, our contract is set through what year?
2029.
Okay, escalation factor of?
Yeah.
I switched us over to the capital budget items for Public Works. Want to take a look at those? Has everybody been able to get access? You see capital budget items now? In the system, okay. If you're in capital budgeting and you select capital budget 2526, you can access the requests through request manager. And I'm filtering right now.
Yeah, I can see.
By department.
I can get in.
Selecting Public Works. Because of the way that the capital budget scenarios are structured, you'll see some items included in here that have a $0 cost for the upcoming fiscal year. That's because their cost is probably not hitting for a future year. What we're doing is building a scenario for the entire 10-year capital improvement plan. So you'll see a couple items that we won't touch on because we're not getting started on those projects in the current fiscal year. That makes sense. Also, as I noted in my memo, this capital budget scenario assumes that we will move forward with a facility improvement project that would bring in some additional projects, potentially make eligible some of the Public Works garage updates. So you will not see those in this scenario, because we're hopeful that we could use bond funds for those projects. If you decide ultimately to not move forward with that project, we're going to return them to the budget and look for other cuts to make to accommodate them. As you recall, you approved replacing the Public Works garage windows, which we've been doing sequentially year after year. So you won't see the window replacement in next year's budget. However, should you decide, next April's not the time to move forward with a bond issue for an improvement project, we would return those to the budget and figure out how to make some other adjustments. I think you've got a couple other Public Works garage facility update things that we've turned off for now, but we'll turn them back on if the determination is made that we either don't want to pursue the bond project, or we want to pursue it at a later date. That makes sense. Do you want to walk through some of these questions about these items?
Have we had any issues at the Public Works facilities that, in terms of people being able to access it freely? I see the gate opener, you know.
That's for the storage yard. We have, we have to push it manually, and it takes a lot of effort to push that, and then if you get, particularly if you have snow or salt, sometimes it could take a couple people to do so. The gate is also left open throughout the day. This would provide a little more security, and it would also, it's a heavy gate, it really is.
It's about 50 feet long.
Yeah.
So one person opening it, yeah.
I think Jason had me go up there once to get something, just so he knew I'd put in the budget, and it worked, because I was surprised how hard it was to open this thing.
Sean, you probably had your fair share of opening that gate as well.
Yeah, yeah, it takes every ounce of.
Six scouts can get it.
Yeah, yeah, a fanny you got to get that.
If you get snow or ice, it's tough.
Yeah.
I thought that was part of the employee exercise program. And.
The firemen also fuel up there, so it's important that they get that.
You buy our own diesel?
Access to get in there and in and out as well. So they're in and out there in the evening or on the weekends, so.
Do you want to talk about your street projects that you have in there?
Sure.
West Bruno, Le Cleed, and then Greenwood?
Sure, so I'll start with West Bruno. We ended up, it's, we did a federal STP project, which is a Surface Transportation Program project. We put, we combined with Richmond Heights to reconstruct West Bruno. It'll be complete concrete reconstruction, basically, from, for the most part, from Le Cleed, although there's going to be some improvements just west of Le Cleed, but for the most part, it's, it's basically the center from Le Cleed all the way west, or pardon me, eastward to McCready, and they're going to end up putting in mini roundabouts, if anyone's seen those, they're kind of, and that's going to be used as our traffic calming measure. And then another larger, much more robust, it's going to almost be like a bean-shaped because of all the different points of ingress egress. We're going to do a roundabout at, at Brudell and Lindberg and West Bruno. It's in the concept phase. We've turned in an application for that with East-West Gateway for federal funding, 80%, 80/20 match, so we'd be paying 10%. We'd be splitting the cost right down the middle of Richmond Heights. I anticipate hearing about that grant within the next month. Hopefully, we're successful. The nice thing about this is this grant was filed in Richmond Heights' name, so it gives us a better shot at another grant we turned in in February, and that's for Le Cleed Station Road from Manchester Road right by Aldi's north to Folk. And in addition to that, we're going to also make improvements to one of the bridge structures. One of the bridges, there's, we've got several bridges in town, most people don't think about it. You kind of cross these smaller bridges, you don't realize it. And this is our, the one that has the most problems. It's a box culvert, and we just need to make a new connection with that. So they allowed us to do that as part of a surface transportation grant, which was So they allowed us to do that as part of a surface transportation grant, which was nice because we didn't know if we had to go get a separate grant for this. And we'll find out at the same time. The other project, which everyone's probably heard for many, many years, is the Greenwood project. That's a collaboration with Great Rivers Greenway. We're going to be having a complete reconstruction from St. Elmo to Canterbury, a concrete reconstruction of Greenwood Boulevard. On the south side, there's going to be a 10-foot wide pedestrian path. That, that, and GRG is paying for that portion. It's going to be federal funds. We're getting 1.128 million for, from the federal government for STP, Surface Transportation. But we've worked out a separate agreement that the council probably approved maybe four or five months ago for another 537,000, which is coming from GRG general funds. And then there's also a CMAC grant. It's going to be combined and that's congestion mitigation and air quality grant from GRG, and that's 1.4 million dollars. Right now I have in the budget $622,000 in funds for, is what we're hoping. But I've got two different bids on this project and they're $600,000 apart. So I'm anxiously awaiting, and I know everyone is because it's really kind of, if it's in the high end, then we're really tight in the capital. If it's in the low end, we have a lot, we have some more breathing room in capital. As I said, those funds need to be obligated. The mayor asked earlier by September 30th. I anticipate we'll have those funds obligated by the end of July and or August. I would hope we would start construction similar to what we did with our road, road projects this year where we would get a, get maybe two good months of construction in. And then we would probably wrap up in the spring and early summer.
And Maplewood Public Works is running that project?
Yes.
Thank goodness.
Now, we are running it from Sussex to Canterbury, but GRG will be running it. This is also, if I, I'll back up a little bit, especially for the newer council members. The, there's going to actually be a pedestrian trail, which is going to be, it's going to be picked up where, if you know where the old McDonald's site is, that's going to be a park that GRG is, is working with Webster in collaboration, have a nice little, like a passive park there. And then it's going to come across Big Bend and then at Oxford, on the south side of Oxford, it's running east to Sussex. It's crossing Sussex on the east side of Sussex, heading north to Greenwood. And so that trail portion will be, will be managed by GRG. And then the, the, the second phase would be basically all of Greenwood, which would be managed by Maplewood. And then once the trail hits Oxford, Oxford's obviously in good shape right now. They're just going to basically be constructing the trail to take it east to Slay Park. That portion will be also managed by GRG and GRG alone. But GRG has a project manager and, and we have a very good working relationship with GRG. So that, I mean, if there's resident complaints, we'll be able to address them from a staff perspective as well. But we were very concerned about just the volume at Greenwood and, and just, it's going to be, it's going to be a bit of a mess, to be honest with you. It's going to, it's going to cause some problems for people in that area. So that's why we wanted to make sure Maplewood was going to actually manage that project. We didn't want them to have to reach out to multiple people. They could come to one source and, and we can deal with their concerns.
And the Greenwood overpass is all on St. Louis County? And?
That's, that's in the near future. I called a while back to get a little more, a better date and I haven't got, I don't have a fine date, but they're very close unless, Amber, did you have anything new to add to that? Yeah.
So we expect major disruption there?
I don't expect as much disruption from that. I mean, it definitely, it definitely, I think you'll probably have more traffic on James and then on Oxford.
Oxford, yeah.
Yeah. James and Oxford, you'll get quite a bit more. For those that aren't, know what we're talking about, we're talking about the overpass over Greenwood. They're going to be reconstructing the bridge that goes over and leads to railroad, which is just north of the railroad tracks. We're very happy they're doing that bridge. There was consideration at one time to eliminate that bridge. And the city was very vocal that we needed that bridge. We went to Missouri Department of Highways and Traffics on at least two different occasions for meetings. This is going back many years. This, this bridge design has been in the works probably seven years.
For the, going back to the bids you were talking about that are $600,000 apart for the GRG project, do we have any line of sight on how tariffs might impact construction material costs? Are those going to go up specifically? Are metals and stuff? Do we know?
Metals, steel, yes.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of steel. You've got obviously some rebar in there, but you know, it, it's, I don't thi, I don't see a massive change with concrete because a lot of that's sourced locally, but you know, it's hard really to tell. I think everything would go up a little. I've been reaching out to contractors that I'm, I'm very happy with. For example, I've sent the plans off to Spencer who's done our local roads for the past four years very successfully and their, their prices, if everyone remembers, were, they saved us almost a million dollars. They were a lot lower. I'm, I'm really pushing for contractors we know, so hopefully we can keep prices down. But it is possible.
Other questions? What's next?
Go ahead and move on to the operations budget for parks. The salaries that you see in the parks budget, I think you're all aware, are a portion of our Public Works, Street Department and other, how many, how many of your staff? Is that inclusive of everybody in Public Works?
Yes, excluding the, the Building Department.
Yeah. So obviously some notable items that we've discussed recently. We had budgeted the parks bus replacement in this year's budget. The way that the timing worked out for the bidding, that's been moved entirely into next year's budget. And that replacement bus should come in pretty soon after July 1st. The Yale Park Master Plan update is included in this park's budget. And we do have costs reflected, projected through the end of this year for the flood repairs to Deer Creek. Those are principally in repair costs, repairs and maintenance, a little bit, I think, in professional services and nursery too. So if you've noticed a big spike in 2025 projected versus what's budgeted for FY '26, that's, that's the difference.
Just for my benefit, to bring me up to speed on Deer Creek Park flood damage repairs, is that an annual item at this point? No, for, I'm, I'm just curious, is this like, is the budget adjusted annually or based on?
Yeah, we can kind of answer it together. Last flood we had was 2022. Obviously this last one was 2024. Before 2022, I think it was 2011. So we don't know. It's, it's, it's something we want to be prepared for, I think, in the future. I don't know why we've had a spike. There's, there's probably some theories and some, but yeah, it's, it's right around 100,000, 100, between 100 and 150,000 each time we get a, the park completely flooded like that. So that's unfortunate, but it's the, the cost we pay to have that park.
I'll add that we are trying to be proactive about engaging some of our key stakeholders in this conversation. Obviously it's the ballfields that are most expensive to replace and those are most consistently used by the school district. So I've been in conversation with the superintendent about whether it makes sense for us to explore cost share for repairs or whether or not they want to provide us a fee for rental fee to use that space. I know rental fees have not been popular with council in the past, but in the year and a half that I've been here, this conversation has come up a few times with our partners at the Heights as well about park usage and how we continue to run considerable deficits in parks operations, which is part of our duty as a city, right? We don't have parks in order to make money off of them. That being said, the maintenance cost for some of our parks and in particular some of our amenities, the ballfields at, at Deer Creek are putting and can potentially continue to put significant strain on our budget. So we would be remiss not to explore opportunities to gain back some of that expenditure in some way. I don't know where we might land in a conversation like that. I understand that's difficult from a taxpayer perspective, whether the school is paying for it or we're paying for it. It's ultimately the same taxpayers who are paying for that repair. But I think we need to come, come up with some more long-term planning and discussions around sustaining that park as an asset. I think you all are aware, the property is owned by St. Louis County and we maintain it at our own cost because it is a fantastic park. But I think there's, we're lacking consensus about what to do with that space. So I'd love for all of you to, who've thought about it since we've had that flooding in November to let us know what else we should be looking at.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, the piece where you said the rental fees were not popular with council. I think when we talked, I, I was fairly outspoken about that. When we talked about it before, it was specifically for youth sports. I think for the school district, maybe it's a little bit of a different situation since, yeah, I mean, I guess ultimately the, the cost will get passed on to the taxpayer. But with youth sports, it directly gets passed on and there's already some people, I mean, to me, it's a little bit different scenario if the school district was chipping in for part of these repairs or rental fees versus the youth sports. So I, I mean, maybe worth, I would be supportive of that if the school district was on the hook for some of it at least.
And I was, I had the exact, that, that precise comment loaded up and I'm prepared to say, so I will just say ditto. That conversation was about directly impacting people, a nonprofit who didn't have the budget to cost share.
Yeah.
The school district does.
Yeah, we should definitely pursue that because they're probably the primary. There's probably some other leagues that use it as well, but primarily MRH does, so. We maintain the park. It's, you know, in general, it's free. A lot of MRH students are there all the time, so, yeah, I would definitely pursue that. But to put it as a line item, I just, I just, we probably just should deal with it as it comes. Since it's going to be, since climate change is going to be so random, you know, we could have years with a drought.
They would do a drought, so.
Right, you know, so, you know.
So is that, so we don't actually own that property? The county does, from what you're saying? Are there other municipalities that have a similar arrangement where it's also, is it always on the municipality for the hook to cover all the operating costs? Okay.
And, and two points of clarification. We have not increased our budget in maintenance and repairs for next year. If you would like us to do so, we can take that path. It will require us to cut in some other areas. Additionally, there isn't another place for a ballfield in Maplewood or in any of the Richmond Heights parks that are used by the school district. So I just wanted to note that. We've, we've had that discussion with the school district about where else this might be located and there is no other place for it to be located, which is why it's in Deer Creek and has been for years and years and years.
With regards to the Quad City expenses, is our, our share based on population?
We are going to be engaging in an analysis this year to determine what our share should be based on. Originally, when we first came together with them 20 years ago, our fee was 260,000. I think maybe six or seven years ago, we raised it to 290,000. In conversation with their city manager recently, and she has let me know this doesn't really fulfill our share. We did agree to increase it slightly under the agreement that we would spend the next year doing an analysis of our all-in costs. Each city contributes to the partnership to determine what a more appropriate calculation or any calculation that we could apply to that formula because we pay for the pool equipment. They pay for the pool staffing. They staff the Heights rec programs. There's a number of things that are available to Maplewood residents that they pay for and, and vice versa. So we want to make sure that we're capturing the all-in cost for each city and then determining a formula that makes sense for us.
What is this program? I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with it.
This is our park program.
EARC?
EARC.
I heard Quad Cities.
Yeah, that's how it was put in the finance system years ago.
Okay, park, I understand. I'm good there.
Richmond Heights, Brentwood, Maplewood, and was Clayton part of this in it originally?
Hence the quad.
Yeah, the Shaw Park.
So that's where the Quad Cities came from.
Park, I totally get. Sorry about that.
This is another category description we'll be able to change when we update our finances.
Looks good.
Okay. We'll take a look at Parks Capital.
And the grass cutting, this is for outside firms to assist us with the, okay. Otherwise we'd, we'd have to add how many employees?
We have to add employees. It was.
And equipment.
I don't think that worked out very well, did it?
Well, it, it, the one, it's the one service that really hasn't gone up.
Right.
A lot of others. I think it was the advent of the zero to the, you know, the, the, the high-speed mowers and so it hasn't gone up much over the years.
Right, cool.
So we have had to make some choices here. As you saw from the overview, we're dipping considerably into our fund balance to support our parks capital and operations needs. So some of these are excluded for this scenario with the anticipation that we would defer them until the following fiscal year. So you'll note everything that is under consideration is, is yellow with the related amounts. Here's the park bus that we've moved over into this, next year's budget. One of the primary cost items there is the Yale Park Master Plan. We did receive a 441,000 grant for that, 441,000 dollar grant for that project. So there is a fair portion that the city will have to cover. Street, project curb and gutter replacements, those are, are not just for parks, but stormwater management. So Anthony, can you confirm this is also part of the Greenwood project?
So, so the Yale Park Master Plan improvements is a million dollars?
No, it's 590 total.
We have 440.
And we have 441. That's grant funded.
So this number that we have in the budget, we, there's nowhere in this number that you're offsetting it by the 400.
We're offsetting it in the revenue, in the parks revenue.
Any part of it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It shows as grant revenue. So if you look under Parks.
Gotcha.
And Grant Revenue, it'll show it as Grant Revenue.
Cool.
I believe the Sustainability Commission is looking at street lights. Would that be replacing the leased lights with?
They were looking at street lights, they were looking at solar, solar street lights as part of, in, like essentially added light. They're looking at areas of town where it's dark and that money would be in the Prop S budget. We allocated money in Prop S for that and they're working right now with Wash U to identify areas in town that could use additional lighting. So we do it in lieu of, we would not be replacing. We'd probably keep the same stuff we have.
The 132,000 dollars that goes to Ameren?
Yeah, that's, that's not only for electricity, but that's also, we, we pay a fee for each Cobra head that we have out there right now. Depends on the, the wattage, but that, and then it also is included in, they also, if there's, you know, catastrophic storm damage or the bulbs need to be replaced or whatever it is, that's all part of a maintenance agreement. It's all part of the monthly fee for each Cobra head.
What percentage of the lights have been changed over to LED?
I don't have a percentage, but do you have an idea, a guess?
I don't even have a guess, yeah.
Pretty, it's a pretty good, pretty good amount. I mean, they are not replacing any lights with incandescent. If you just drive around town, I, I don't have a number. We can, we can, bless you, we can look at that if you're interested. I don't have a, I don't have a number for that though either.
Okay. But they, they've been replaced. But they, they've been replaced, when the existing bulbs go out, then we.
Absolutely.
We retrofit them with LED.
Absolutely.
Okay. If they could expedite that process, that should save us some money.
We pushed them pretty hard towards that and they, and they, they started indicating they were going to start charging us for some of those change outs. So we backed off a little bit. We were pushing it very hard for a while. And there's been some cases where people wanted another light and we've switched it out to LED. And once that happens, because it's that much brighter, then people have been, then they're, then they're happy with that and it saves us the cost. Every time you add a light, it's a fixed cost.
For the Deer Creek field light upgrade, is that just conversion to LED or is there also mitigation for flooding?
So that would also include the mitigation for flooding. The existing panels are pretty low. So this, this project would then raise that, of course, the LED, we wouldn't need as many panels and the control system would be a lot, a lot more modern and compact. So we would, we would have that all raised up and so, yeah.
It's remote, which is nice.
Yeah. And just a note, speaking of flood mitigation, we have done some other things. So we, we've got a mobile backstop, the backstop that we keep losing over there by the North Pavilion, that's about eight grand every time it went down, eight to 10 grand. So we, we bought a mobile one that when we get potential storms, we can roll that out to high ground. We've added a water heater in the restroom, moved up to the second floor. So we're slowly finding other ways to mitigate damage.
Public chorskasm, using your brain, I love it.
More training.
All that training.
More training.
Ready to talk about Prop S?
Yeah. Forty-three?
Forty-three dash zero, zero, zero. What we're thinking about?
Maybe with the, with Greenwood, yeah. This is essentially what we decided, instead of trying to, because I'm so uncertain about the cost of Greenwood, just because of the, the large variance we have and because of the size of the project, we're basically just going to focus on Greenwood next summer and then whatever remaining Prop S funds we have, we will pick those up in the summer of, the summer of 2026. We've basically knocked nearly every project off our list, the ones we went out to vote on. And we even added, if people remember, we added all those alleys because we got such advantageous pricing. So we're still on track to utilize our Prop S funds within three years, but next year it's primarily going to be Greenwood.
I think that's great too, because that's such an obvious thing people have been waiting for and be so visual.
That was a little, little overextended. We knew, I knew it was going to be bad. I told the city manager.
Sure. Well, I mean, delays are delays, yeah.
And I told residents that had concerns, hey, hey, you know, we've got a lot of projects going. Still got a couple alleys, got a, got a few alleys to take care of, Circle Drive, a portion of that. But for the most part, we've got probably 90% complete and then we did some on top of it. So the Prop S issue was very successful.
So what you don't see here is allocation in future years, either for street projects or for the lighting. See what we end up after this.
But we've talked a lot about this recently and you'll see a resolution, a revised policy and a draft application coming to you as part of the meeting packet for next Tuesday so that you can approve what we previously discussed. So the numbers here show the anticipated cost and revenue for both clearing out the backlog, borrowing, or sorry, appropriating the money from the capital improvement fund and the revenue from the new program.
All right, good?
Yeah, I think we've talked sewer laterals to death, so. We get it.
Thank you.
Yeah. And like we've discussed, we'll revisit it for the first couple of years on an annual basis during budget period, just to see this is how we're trending. Is it working?
Good.
Okay, and then solid waste.
Thirty-three.
Which is also discussed quite a bit recently. From the overview, just, yeah, you'll see that we're continuing to just have this decline in fund balance as a result of the new contract. So as we had discussed, our recommendation is that we go out for a tax increase in spring of 2027 unless you make a different decision about a potential facilities improvement bond issue. Those two things kind of, we want to move them together if they're going to get moved. We have sufficient fund balance.
Right.
To draw on it, yeah.
Um, for people who've lived here much, much longer than me, how amenable are residents to a tax increase typically for sewer? Or is it kind of a thing of everyone just goes, like I do with MSD, I don't have another option?
Uh, I would imagine it would go pretty well. I mean, if people realize if it's, if you just state the facts on the, the costs, I think people would be more than happy to, to eat a tax increase, knowing that they're getting, you know, saving 150 bucks a year by only increasing their sales tax by 50 bucks or whatever, you know, whatever the numbers are. So, yeah, I mean, I would imagine, most of the voters in Maplewood are pretty savvy with that kind of stuff. That's why, you know, when we go to them with bond issues and taxes, we're not doing it just to do it, you know? Yeah, there's a reason, so. Yeah, no, I think they'd be amenable to it.
The last time we passed an increase was 2014.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
On the Myriad a lot, the, it looks like the, the costs have gone down for trash and recycling collection. Does that also include grease?
We, right, at this point, we discontinued the composting program. That's probably what, that might be what you're seeing unless, Lexi, if there's something else that I'm missing, yeah, we were not getting participation. We were checking those regularly. We're going to try again in the future. We'll probably go back out for a grant for a year because they usually give you a grant for a year, but then they want you to continue later. But we just were not getting the participation we wanted and we needed some room for the grease dumpsters as well. So it was kind of a, it was kind of, it was two factors there.
Does that affect the green dining district status?
I don't know, that would be a Laura question, I'm not totally sure. It was, it was not, it was not a cheap service, so if it was not being used, it was kind of, it wasn't being, again, it wasn't being utilized. We, we will probably revisit that if we need to in the future with a grant and then hopefully re-energize people's interest.
Is the, is the glass recycling been there separate from everything else we do with our trash and waste? Okay. Cool, thank you.
That's all we had on the agenda to discuss tonight. We've got police and fire for tomorrow.
Kirby, I got a question, oh, sorry. Or actually a request, I know you're busy. Do we have our revenues, general, general fund revenues going back 15 years? Just the, you know, from year, yeah, just the year, just the total, what was our revenue for it? Not balances, just?
Total revenue?
Yeah.
I would think so. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not, can't guarantee 15, probably, I'm pretty confident.
Ten, okay.
But I mean, I can go back, I mean, I can get you that for as far back as we have.
That'd be great. I just, I have a, a thought and a theory, so.
Is that something you'd like to look at tomorrow night?
No, no, I just want to look at myself before I, I, I want to, I want to run it through some stuff first before I, 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 yeah, so, anyway.
Can we just email it to your, to your city email?
Absolutely. Yep.
Yeah, that shouldn't be here.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Thanks again for the work on here. It's great.
Yeah, I appreciate the, apparently the training paid off because, you know, I appreciate the answers to all of our questions.
Hasn't happened yet. We haven't paid for the training yet.
Yeah, he's still got his clown shoes on, look at him.
Do we have any more questions on these topics before we entertain a motion to adjourn? In that case, may I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.